We would like to welcome everyone to the board meeting tonight. And at this time, I will call the meeting to order. We're so glad you're here and we appreciate community involvement, participation, and we love to see people come to the boardroom. You learn things. It's just a good positive way to spend a Monday evening, isn't it? So anyway, welcome. At this time, we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So we would like to ask everyone to please stand at this time. And Commissioner Lynn Green will listen to our prayer and then Commissioner Tony Brown will listen to the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening humbly, as we know how, thanking you and praising you for the blessings that you've given us today, thanking you for allowing us to have health and strength to work and to go about our daily duties. Father, we pray this evening that as we try to conduct the business for this county, that you would guide us, guide our thoughts, check our hearts, Lord, that we do everything that we can for the upbuilding of your kingdom for those that we serve here in the county. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you're a veteran, do a regulation salute. Attention. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, we just celebrated Veterans' Day recently. And are there any veterans in the room? And if so, we would ask you to stand, please, so we can acknowledge your service to our country.
Thank you so much for your service to our country.
Okay, Commissioners, at this time, we have the minutes before us. Are there any questions concerning the minutes as presented? I do have one, two items to follow up with. Number one, when we met with the school board, we decided to do a resolution in supporting the school board in their efforts to have testing done more than just at the end of the year to see if a child or student passes or stays behind. So staff is going to go ahead and get that ready for us and we'll have that on our agenda for next month. And the second item, staff, what needs to follow up with is to arrange the meeting with Sue, and we're so glad Sue's here tonight, and Dwayne's here, works with our rec department, to line up the meeting with our rec department staff and the high school athletic director. And let's get that going so we can teach these kids and get that moving forward, that program. So I will say, for those in attendance, we did meet with our school board about two weeks ago and had a great meeting. I will brag on the school board, we got an excellent bunch of men and women who really have got the interest of the kids at heart. So it's a pleasure to work with a group of men and women like that. Now, what's the pleasure of the board concerning approving the minutes? Are there any other questions or comments?
We approve. Say.
Okay. Discussion? On our favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Okay, we have the agenda before tonight, Commissioners. Are there any additions or deletions? I do have two. One is a closed session for a personnel matter and a range update will be the second. Closed session for a personnel matter will go under new business. It will be item E. And then the range update would be under old business, item E also.
We do need to include economic development under that closed session as well.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Maybe we go have a closed session concerning those matters.
Okay.
Second.
All right, discussion? On our favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay. With that being said, let's move to our first item on our appointment schedule. And you know, with so, you watch the news and you hear so much, there's a lot of things happening in our nation and people sometimes are not rewarded for doing things the right way. Well, tonight, we've got someone present with us who did things the right way. This was a young lady who desired to become an American citizen. And she's present tonight and we're going to recognize her. And we're so glad that Ms. Ray had a desire to become an American citizen and she's worked hard and she did things the right way. And that's the way it ought to be done, the right way. Illegal entry and all that in our nation is wrong and we will commend her tonight and recognize her and celebrate the fact that she is now an official citizen of America. So Commissioner Vaughn had requested that we add this to the agenda tonight. So Brenda, you know this young lady better than anybody on the board, so you want to say a few words and we'll bring her up?
I will. I'll get a church with her and she worked and studied very hard, passed her test. I think there was 100 questions on it or something. I'm not real close sure about that, but she is married to Dwayne Ray, who was raised in Glenwood. They met, I think, through the Lord Jesus Christ on the internet. How's that? And she has improved his life and they, she's very, very dear to me, very dear to me.
Let's bring her on up. Ms. Ray, do you mind to come to the podium, please? And your husband can come up here, too. We'll get him up here with you, okay? Is that all right, if we do that? All right, thank you. I was reading the information sheet, Ms. Ray, and I noticed that you, the date I passed my test and interview for U.S. citizenship was July 22nd and you took your oath for U.S. citizenship on August 27th, 2019. Can you tell us a little bit about how you felt when you became an official citizen of the United States of America?
I'm so excited because I'm very long working for it. Before I started my permanent residence to apply it, I already praying for to become a U.S. citizen.
What country did you?
Philippines.
The Philippines.
Yeah.
Okay, great, great. Dwayne, anything you want to add to what I said?
Just want to thank the Lord for what he done for me. He sent me a dear sweet angel. I was searching for a Bible on the internet, King James 16:11, the original Old English Bible. When that screen popped up is how I met her.
What about that?
Searching for a Bible.
Yeah, I'm doing evangelism on that site because internet is my evangelism ground.
Well, we are so glad that we've got the honor to recognize you tonight and we're so glad you're here. And I just looked at your hobbies. You like to plant vegetables. That's good.
She has greenhouses.
She's got greenhouses. So if anybody wants to get some vegetables, they can contact you and reach you about vegetables.
Plants.
Plants. You do the plants, okay. All right, well, let's give her a hand for doing things the right way.
If we get you out here, we want to get our picture made with you.
If we get right here, Commissioners are going out there if you don't mind.
Why don't you just stay there with him?
Yeah, Dwayne, stay there with him. Let's get, we have ours in the back. We love to do things like that. That's the start of meeting off and recognize someone who's accomplished something is great. And we always try to do that at every meeting. Next item, we have a public shooting range update. We have Mr. Gary Gardner with us tonight. And sir, if you don't mind, come on up to the podium there. And Ashley, is there anything you need to say before Mr. Gardner speaks?
Gary and I talked a couple of weeks ago and just at the request to have the meeting. Understand, he's driven in from Raleigh to be here and the only request he had was to be early in the meeting. So I said, we can accommodate that. But you'll see some background information just for public benefit, but also where things stand now.
Good to have you, sir.
Appreciate you having me. Said, my name's Gary Gardner, the engineer and section chief of Wildlife Resources Commission. Kind of our goal with our shooting range program as an agency is to establish one of the best shooting range programs in the nation. We currently have 10 WRC or partner ranges across the state. We're several molar in various stages of design evaluation. We are in the process of finishing up one brand-new range in Northampton County that we'll call, we call our Odom Shooting Range. We're beginning major renovations on our large hunter education complex down in Ellerby as well. Those have kept us pretty busy, but we're ready to get the, we're finally over the hump with this project. So all of these ranges we build are fully ADA accessible and our goal is to kind of have shooting opportunities available within 35 to 50 miles for everyone in the state to drive to. This is the map currently of where all our shooting ranges are in the state. You see the ones that are WRC managed. We've got some we partner with the U.S. Forest Service out in the western part of the state, two county partnerships, and the one under construction up in Odom right now, as well as this McDowell County and the Camden County ones being potential proposed ranges. When I spoke of trying to get a range for everyone to drive 35 to 50 miles within, here's kind of the map we use to look at the spots we need to fill in. Not sure if this has a pointer, but you can see that this range we're talking about fills in a pretty good part of the state. Just some usage data on the ranges that we do have in operation right now. The four blue ones are the ones that are WRC staffed, averaging 4,000 attendees a year and that's initial signups, not, so those people are coming back repeatedly and revisiting. The foothill shooting complex, you see, has a huge drawdown in Cleveland County and our Holly Shelter Shooting Range out in Pender County. The Pender County operates their parks and rec department. For anyone who's not familiar with where we're looking at putting this range, that's right off I-40 at the Ashworth Road exit. Kind of a better concept of what the site and how it'll lay on the land. Coming in off Ashworth Road, we do have an easement across that property, quite a bit of road to build to get up to the range site proper. Here's an idea of kind of what it would look like, 100-yard range, 20-foot back stops. The 25-yard pistol range over to the right of that would be a static archery range and 3D archery on the way up to the parking area there. Kind of how we got here, it's been a long process. We did formal sound studies in October 2017, held a public meeting in February of last year. Our commission approved the initial concept of the project in April of last year. At the time, we were working through, at that time, we requested an appraisal through the state property office, which wasn't favorable for either of us. And so the county worked on getting a second appraisal, which we received back in April. At that time, we were good to go, but then we got word of what this target range access bill. I'll get into that a little bit more, but that was signed into legislation by President Trump back in June. This past October, our commission did approve to move forward with the phase two through the state property office for the land transfer. Next steps. We anticipate the property closing taking a few months. April's pretty conservative, but we hope to have it squared away by then. We're going ahead and working on our grant submission through Fish and Wildlife Service for the federal funds towards this project. The design is already underway. We've already done surveys, done geotechnical work, and some of the initial layout of where the road will go. Once we get the design approved through state construction, the permitting and the final reviews with the state construction office will take place. With bidding next summer, construction probably early fall, and ideally a completion in the summer of 2021. We are looking at adding an office, especially, you know, the county's agreed to operate and man the range, so having some sort of classroom, signing area, and storage is going to be ideal. Estimated cost for the project right now is just under $2.5 million. As I mentioned, the initial appraisals we got through the state property office came in at just over $500,000, quite a bit more than the county paid for the property, I believe, back in 2008. That's kind of the peak of the market. The county's appraisal came back in at just under a million. Previously, we were having to try to work with a 75-25% split is the way the federal grant used to work. So the federal Fish and Wildlife Service, through the Wildlife Restoration Fund, supplied 20, sorry, 75% of the money and we had to get 25% through non-federal funds. The transfer donation of the property does count towards that match. But with the target range access bill coming in, that changes the whole match setup from a 90 to a 90-10%. So 90% federal funds and just 10% match. So that gives us quite a bit of leeway to do more with the money we have. Just an idea of what the office could look like. This is an architectural rendering of the office we looked at putting at that Odom Range. We ran into some budget issues on that range because we were still under the 75-25 match. But this is ideally a concept of what would be going in at the site. This is the range, just so everybody can kind of visualize what it's going to look like. At the Odom Range I mentioned, which we're probably having a ribbon cutting on next month. You can kind of see the sideburns all around. These are the air baffles. These are the safety features. We had to all of our ranges to keep any ballistics from leaving the range. And we started a new design for the shelter. You can see kind of the open ceiling here. It's a design we kind of borrowed from South Carolina's shooting range program that allows the, really the impact and sound of the rifle fire to kind of go up instead of staying inside of that shooting shelter. It can be pretty uncomfortable for the shooters in there when there's a lot of shooting going on. Inside of what the shooting shelters look like, this is a new design we did with Odom as well. We've got benches set up where they're, can be set up with the rotating, oops, sorry. We've gone with a new rotating style bench here so accommodate left-handed, right-handed shooters. It's adjustable in height and of course can be slid out of the way for anyone needing a wheelchair. The pistol range, of course, is more of a standard range and that's an idea of what that will most likely look like. I went through that really fast. I know we've been working on this for quite a while. It feels like it's taken forever. It does for us, too. Getting these appraisals squared away was a big scenario that we had to overcome. And then once we found out that this target range access bill was coming into play, we knew that was going to be a real game changer with being able to leverage the dollars from this donation to get us everything we wanted to be able to do with this range. This is significantly more expensive than, for example, the range we're building down at Odom. Most of that expense is going into the road, pretty extensive amount of roadwork to have to go through the terrain and get up there and still have enough room. You know, we're planning to pave just from a maintenance standpoint and accessibility standpoint. 20-foot, two cars passing each other with no issues. There may be a few spots that'll be a little bit tighter, but, so we know it's been a little bit frustrating probably for the folks who've been involved with this from the beginning, feeling like it's taken forever and it has been. Now, we've got the Odom Range pretty much complete. Another major renovation underway. Our engineering staff's able to get back full focus on this. And now that we've got our board's approval and the grant's ready to be implemented, we're all ready to go. Are there any questions? I know that was fast.
The range, what have the capability to be extended, the distance?
It's something we, that's another point to point out. Our commission voted probably a year and a half ago that all the ranges we build, and I think this has been mentioned a few times, 100 yards will be our max going forward, just from a standardization standpoint and cost-benefit standpoint. With that being said, if there is interest, the initial looks, we did, it could go reasonably out to 150, 200 was pushing a little bit with the terrain there, but if that's something we want to look at and y'all think there's extra funding available or we think we can leverage more of the federal dollars.
I think early on, I had mentioned to you guys about the idea of possibly later on us extending another range on our dime if we had to.
Yes, sir.
And you did say that we would be allowed to do that.
It's something, yeah, and it's something we probably need to go and look at while we're doing the initial design to see, make sure we're not blocking something in and so we can talk about that more as we get deeper into the design. We just have something separate off to the side y'all would do or we somehow build off of what we would plan to construct. We have found, I mean, just the data we're getting from all of our ranges, from those 10 ranges, our partnership with the Forest Service, the Forest Service operates ranges all around the country. Most shooters, they say, shoot at 50 yards is kind of the common. You always got the folks who want to do the 1,000-yard shots, 300-yard shots, that type of thing. But in general, even if we've got a 100-yard, 150-yard shot, they say the majority of the folks are shooting at 50 yards. That's just what the average shooter is comfortable with.
Of the other ranges, is this the smallest range that you would look at? I know your statement was that for future, it'd be 100-yard range. What are the yardage for the other ranges that you have?
That's a good question. The range we just are finishing up at Odom is a 100-yard range. The renovations we're doing at Lentz will be a 100-yard range. Let's see, our range at Castle County is a 100-yard range. Lock is a 100-yard range. So with the exception of the Pender County range and the Cleveland County range, I think everything is 100-yard max.
What are those, Pender and Cleveland? What'd you say?
Pender is 200 and Cleveland County, I believe, is 250. And we had significant safety issues with the one in Cleveland County.
Somebody in Cleveland donated a pretty good amount.
Made some major money, right?
Cleveland County paid for most of that and they subsidized the operation of that So that's a lot different model than what we assume this will be. The Pender County model is they charge $10 a person a day. That all goes back into the operation of the range. You know, the county can't make money off of it because federal funds went into it, but it pays all the staff, pays power bills. It covers everything and allows a little bit of money to go back into the operation if there's, you know, little upfits that need to be done or new equipment, all that type of stuff. But we're always there for the major maintenance. So it's worked out very well at Pender County.
Okay, other comments, questions? Just anything you need to add?
No, but if there's, I say no, but then I keep going, but if there's a stated preference to have that conversation right now on additional yardage, I mean, we need to communicate that probably sooner rather than later to where they're not 90% design and we communicate. I think he's hearing it to some degree.
Yeah, I think he, certainly, this is probably, I've mentioned it myself.
Yeah, and that's a good point and we don't have to have the conversation here necessarily, but does that mean building off, taking and expanding the existing one or putting something bigger on the property at another location?
That's something we can talk about before you do the design on it.
And I'll have our engineer start looking at it both the ways and seeing which is the most feasible and economical.
Okay, great. Been a long process, but it's a process, isn't it?
Yeah, like I say, I think we're just getting over the hump here and all of these projects have taken years and I know it seems like, should go faster than they do, but there's a lot of moving parts.
We have a lot of people interested in shooting in McDowell County, hunter sportsmen, and safety training and all that. So we are excited as a board to see it moving forward.
Absolutely. And the next step I didn't mention is me and Ashley talked recently about a memorandum of agreement we have for all these that we'll look at and getting that going and as the rest of the.
Also, one other thing that I'd like to bring up tonight, and we had talked about this earlier, I had mentioned the idea of maybe going in there with some of the extra land and maybe put in some campsites in there, primitive campsites or whatever. And I believe you guys said that, you know, there's also a possibility that the state would have some, could get some funding for that as well.
If I said that, I misspoke, yeah. We don't have a way to fund camping sites like that. Well, it depends what's needed, you know, if it's just clearing an area. I think there are concerns about how, you know, access to it, making sure somebody's not camping behind the range, if they're having to drive by the range, that type of stuff from a security standpoint and operations for y'all. But I know we talked, too, about the possibility of a fishing access at the pond down there and those types of things, so.
But there is a possibility that there's some grant money or funding out there for, at least for the fishing part of it.
Yes, for the fishing part, for sure. And our staff has been evaluating that. I think they've gone and visited the site and looked at figuring out where it could go and what may work there.
All right, Gary, thanks so much and we appreciate you and your staff, Wildlife Commission, for working with us.
Ashley's got my contact information if anybody needs.
Let me just state for anybody present, when the board starts the meeting, citizens can comment during system comment, so there's no provision made up because we're here to do the business tonight that's on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak to Gary concerning this, he's going to be leaving here a second, so grab him in the hallway and he'll be glad to hit you up. But we've got an agenda. We can't dive off and we've got to stick right on it, okay?
Yeah, I'll head out that door if anybody wants to comment. I'll be glad to listen.
All right.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to our next appointment, item C. This is the Recreation Department update. We have Sue with us. Sue, come on up. Good to have you tonight.
I've got a test over here.
We have a book, huh?
Pop test. I always have a pop test, Sue.
You're going to have a pop quiz, aren't we?
Oh, I don't have a pop test. You don't do that, do you?
He's saying, yes. I agree. Red. Says a comment. Yeah. Say what you want to. Says a new.
So you've got the presentation, in case you want to make notes.
I gave you a couple of handouts. The first one is a calendar of all of our facilities and what happens in those facilities throughout the entire year. If you see anything that I have missed in the presentation or in the calendar, please let me know. That's a lot of information to put down on paper. But we will go ahead and begin. So the Recreation Department has been under McDowell County since July of 1993 and we strive for the development and maintenance of a system of parks, recreation facilities, athletics, and special programs to further enhance the quality of life for the citizens of McDowell County. The Recreation Department has six full-time employees and 15 to 20 part-time employees. Those part-time employees are solely for the swimming season. There are swim pool lifeguards and attendants. You have me as the director. Jason is responsible for the athletics and the maintenance and certifications for the swimming pools. Dwayne Carroll is the maintenance supervisor. Lisa Paget is the secretary. And we have two maintenance technicians, Drew Withers and Christopher Twitty. Drew does handle split responsibilities. In the spring and summertime, he is completely maintenance with Chris and Dwayne. In the fall and winter... In the fall and winter, then we change his hours to where he will come in later, stay later, and then he assumes all responsibilities for the gym supervisor. Our facilities, we have nine facilities throughout McDowell County that consist of ballfields, playgrounds, picnic shelters, skate park and two swimming pools. The last one, the Greenley Greenway, we are not 100% responsible for, however, we do partner with facility maintenance and do what we can to help them out there picking up trash, if they need help with any mowing or weed eating and that type of thing. Our first facility is Sandy Andrews, also known as North Cove. It's located on US 221 North. Sandy Andrews has one baseball and softball field, concession and restroom facilities, outside basketball court, playground, two picnic shelters in excess to the river fishing. Currently, we have removed the old tin roof on the dugouts and getting ready to re-roof those. Vandalism is consistently occurring at this park due to primary, its location. So a security system, we are looking into trying to do an economical security system so we can kind of keep an eye on that a little bit better. And removal of the dirt from the basketball courts, the youth activities brought in dirt for the ballfields and dumped it on the basketball courts and we need to have that removed, the goal replaced and new netting put up there. These are just, this is just a short video with some of the pictures of North Cove.
The signs look good, by the way.
And those, those are new this budget year, too. We had signs made and installed at every park that we have. So the video's not going to work, is it? Okay. That was North Cove.
We'll get it to the board.
Okay. Our next one is Woodlong Roadside Park. That is, consists of picnics area only and restroom facilities. We have had, we have done a lot of work up there so far this year and we've received a lot of compliments on that park. There is a lot of interest about keeping that park open 24, I mean, year round and we aren't able to because of the restroom facilities have to be winterized. So what we have done now in order to keep it open is poured a concrete platform, placed a portage on there and to hide that, we're going to build a barrier around that and we'll be able to keep it up, open year round there. We are also ordering some heavy duty trash, new trash cans for the roadside park and we will only be able to do a few at a time, so every year we'll be adding new trash cans to that, that area.
What's a trash can cost, by the way? The, the bear proof industrial type?
The ones that we're looking at are, they're the nice trash cans that, and they're like around $300 a piece. But we will be able to put trash cans inside that, so then it's more pleasing to the eyes.
How many do you need up there?
We have 11 picnic tables, so we need about 11 or 12 of those receptacles. So the Old Fort Ballpark is located at Catawba River Road in, of course, Old Fort. It has three baseball and softball fields, concessions and restroom facilities, one tennis court, an outdoor basketball court, a playground, two picnic shelters, and also there is access to the River for fishing. The flood that came through did a lot of damage on that backfield that we have and it also took out the majority of the walking track that was up there as well. But primary concerns right now on all of the small scale and ongoing projects, a lot of that we do on a routine, not yearly like painting and this kind of thing, but we do continually work on upgrading our facilities through the winter time. But what we need to concentrate the most on the Old Fort Ballpark right now are the plumbing to the restrooms, new sinks and the, the whole restroom needs to be, both of them need to be renovated, but the main thing is the drain line going out of the restrooms needs to be unclogged and reworked for that. Small things like the sink in the men's bathroom needs to be replaced and a project we're working on now is removing the tin from the dugouts and we will be replacing those. So next is the Old Fort Swimming Pool, which is also located Catawba River Road, just right across the road on top of the hill from the ballfield. It is a swimming pool, picnic shelter and restroom and shower facilities. We do have a small area for vending and a small office area and chemical storage. We will be painting all of the wooden structures and we will repaint the bathroom floors, the office floors and the vending machine areas. And we will continue on the continuation of cutting the kudzu back to the tree line and that's a constant battle in itself. But, and of course, our long-term projects on each facility as well. For the Glenwood Park, it is located on US, old US 221 South, just past the Glenwood Elementary School and the Glenwood Fire Department. It has three baseball and softball fields, a batting cage, concession and restroom facilities. As well there, we'll be removing the tin roof on the dugouts and replacing those. We'll be removing any rotten wood in the dugouts and replacing that. We will work on grading with our tractor, Field Three, and bring Field Three into a usable condition for a ballfield. We'll also concentrate on, there is a small shed that the youth activities have that they use for storage down there. We want to clear out around there and fix that back wall. And eventually, we would love to have the parking lot scraped, the driveway scraped Now we go to Maple Leaf Sports Complex located off of, on Finley Road next to the bowling alley. It has four baseball and softball fields, concession and restroom facilities. We will be painting, painting the floors in the restrooms. We'll paint the exterior of all of the buildings. And the parking lot where the drainage was fixed, if you pull into the ballfield, it's parking lot on the left-hand side, not the one we share with the bowling alley, that needs to be repaved and striped from where it had to be torn up to fix the drainage on it.
So is the drainage now fixed up there?
For that part, yes. Yes, it is.
But you're not talking about the major drainage issue you got, right?
Right. That's not it. The most important thing for Maple Leaf is, and I'll show a picture of it, well, maybe, yeah, I'll show a picture of it towards the end of it, but behind Field One and Field Two, that bank over time has eroded and Dwayne has given me all of the details on it and I don't understand water basins and all of that. So I do know that that bank is, we're going to have to go from top and completely redo that bank. What is happening, it has eroded, there is nowhere for the water to go and it puddles up in our outfield on Field One and Two. During the season, of course, is when it rains the most, we are unable to mow or weed eat sections of the outfield and huge sections. It's only getting worse and Dwayne has tried with the tractor that we have and he also has rented some equipment to try to redirect the water the best that we could and it's, that's not working. So, and eventually is going to get so bad that it's beginning to start to come into the playing area at now. So that is a major fix that we are not able to do in-house ourselves. 90% of all maintenance, we do perform in-house and able to do that, but that is a major one that we will not be able to. And now we'll move to Hawkins Water Park, which is also known as the Recreation Field located on West Court Street, right behind the Recreation Center. It has one baseball and softball field, picnic shelter with a grill and a concessions and restroom facilities. This ballfield is, it's in okay condition for practices. We do run some senior games out there during that time, but as far as games, it is not up to par for that. The lighting on the ballfield is going to have to be redone, the rewiring, new scoreboard, new wiring to the scoreboard and the bathroom and concessions area needs to be gutted and renovated completely. But that, like I said, it's, you know, it's okay and we're still trying to keep it up the best that we can, but a lot of money needs to be put into that. It will cost about $10,000 per pole in order to have lights put up. So the ones, we have one that fell and they're saying it will cost about to completely put the lights, the frame, the pole and everything up, it'll be about $10,000 a piece. Then, let's see, we are going to repair the rotten wood and refix the dugouts and the, fix the erosion damage on the ballfield and repair the, some ground hog damage along The Recreation Center at, well, at the Recreation Center at Academy Street is the, we have a skate park that is all and it has no additional facilities. Vending and restrooms are located in the Recreation Center for that. We are doing continual small-scale projects. We are painting the graffiti, sealing any cracks or joints. We do have Danny Shaw, a teacher at McDowell High School, personally owned some ramps and skating, skating ramps that he just recently donated to us and we put those up there.
How often is a skate park used? I mean, is it a?
It is, you will usually see about three, maybe four people out there during the season. In the winter time, it's really not, but on any given day, usually after three o'clock then, you might see three or four people out there. And the red structures is what Danny just donated. For the Recreation Swimming Pool, we are, we will be resurfacing the restrooms floors. It has the pool, the vending machines and it is separated from the regular center itself. Right now, last summer, we started losing water, a pretty generous amount of water in the swimming pool. I've had Aquatics Resources up there pressure testing the water lines and he cannot find any leaks in the plumbing lines at all, in the main drain or the, the water jets. So we have torn out, I had them tear out all of the sealer for the expansion joints, re-clean that out, reseal that, and they will be finishing that up one day this week in hopes that that is going to fix a big problem. The swimming pool is extremely old. The best that I can figure, maybe 40 or 50 years old, not real sure, but the lights that are no longer working inside the swimming pool cannot even be replaced because everything for that pool has now, is outdated, so we can't just buy parts here and there to fix things. It will have to, to be modern and up to scale, it would have to have a major renovation planted on it. So, but as always, and also we're looking at repainting the pool deck once we can find all of the leaks and see what's going on with those, but the lights are going to have to be replaced or something's going to have to be done with that because we cannot have swim meets unless we have lights inside of the water in the swimming pool. For the Recreation Center, we have a gymnasium, a cheer and gymnastics room, restrooms, concession area and the offices. The, we will be painting the restrooms as well as resurfacing, resurfacing the restroom floors, painting the offices, paint the gymnastics and the cheer room and clear the weeds and vines off the fence between the church and the Recreation Center itself. These that are mentioning to you are ones that we feel are definite and has to be done for each next season, but we do attempt to get all of the ongoing projects completed through the winter, winter months. In the spring and the summer, when we start getting the ballfields ready for the baseball and softball season, there, we don't have any time until baseball and softball ends, until we winterize the ballfields for extra projects. So from March to about August, September, because we still have Maple Leaf that is rented out, a lot of it is, the main concentration is mowing and weed eating and dragging and the day-to-day operations that have to be completed first and foremost. That has, that is all of our facilities that we have. The athletics the Recreation Department currently offers is youth league spring baseball and softball. and Softball, and it shows you our participants in baseball, it's about $291. Softball in spring is about $156. Fall League Baseball and Softball has really grown, and it's about 132 for baseball and then 106 for softball. We also have youth cheerleading that runs along with basketball, with 23 participants, and then overall in Youth League Basketball, we have 724 participants. The future programs we would like to incorporate is the co-ed volleyball. I have had interest in Youth League Volleyball, which I have talked to some people about that, getting that started, maybe starting in camps to get the interest up, and then moving on into building from that, moving into leagues. We are going to start advertising again and try to offer the, and get the adult basketball interest built back up again, as well as adult softball in the spring and summer months. Activities apart from the Recreation Department is the football and the soccer program. As far as I know, those are the only athletic programs in the county that we, that we aren't responsible for. The football is run by McDowell County Youth Football League, and their president is Turner Kincaid, and they have approximately 180 participants with 40 participants participating and cheerleading. The YMCA runs a spring soccer league and has about 180 participants. They also offer a fall soccer with 200 participants, and they told me that they are beginning an indoor soccer program this coming winter. The special events and programs we offer is the Mountain Glory Challenge. Last year, we had about 38 participants, it varies from year to year. We, this was the, I think next year is going to be the 25th year that we have offered that, and that's a 5K, 10K foot race with a one-mile fun run at the end of it, and the one-mile fun run is usually for 13-year-olds and younger. We offer, we host Bay Bruce State and District tournaments at Maple Leaf. Sometimes we do have to roll over to using Maple Leaf, Old Fort, and Glenwood, all three of those. We, McDowell County Senior Games is a badminton.
You've got a champion right here.
There you go.
Two gold medals.
Absolutely, in badminton, and you're going to sign up for more next year, right? McDowell County Senior Games is a program of the Senior Center. However, for 26 years now, we have been the Events Director. So, as, as far as all of the sporting events goes, we handle all of that every year. Also, we have swimming lessons with, every summer, we have swim lessons in June and July with about 85 participants. Gymnastics is a year-round, they take June and, June and July off with about 94 participants. We have competitive cheer, and then we have cheer camps, gymnastic and cheer camps in the summertime. We also have cheer classes year-round. I have, I spoke with Amy Merrill with Possibilities Day Program, and we are looking at partnering together to bring more opportunities to the special needs community. What we do right now is, we don't have anything really organized for them. I do, and actually, I just talked to a lady today, that we are sectioning off the gym to where we will reserve it for a couple hours, a couple of days a week, just for the special needs, special needs. And then, in the summertime, when swimming lessons and swim team is over with, I try to work with them, give them a, one day a week to where they come in about 10 before everybody else, and let them have their time from about 10 to 11:30. So, our facility rentals is the Marion Old Fort Swim Pool, and that is by far our most popular rental. We rent on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. May 15th, we open the pool calendar, and within the first week, 95% of our available dates are reserved. And the last couple of years, it's starting to look like Black Friday at the Recreation Department when this pool calendar opens. They are waiting for us and have been, we get in about eight, and they, a couple of people were lined up at 6:30 and 7 o'clock.
When does the pool actually open? I had somebody ask that question yesterday.
The day after school is out, and then we will close the swimming pool. We try to make it as close to when school goes back in that we possibly can. But with lifeguards being a lot of college students, a lot of times, it has to be a week before school goes in that we close it. Our gymnasium is our next popular rental, where the pool and the gym, it's a $50 refundable deposit, and then $50 for the rental itself. And that is anywhere from three hours to however long. The pool is rented on Fridays and Sundays from 5:00 to 9:00 after we close, and on Saturdays, it's rented from 6:00 to 9:00, because we close at 5:00 on Fridays and Sundays and 6:00 on Saturdays. The ball fields for outside tournaments, $50 refundable deposit, $75 per field per day with $10 per hour for lights if lights are ever used at night. We also have, if it is rented for a tournament, if any of our facilities are rented for a tournament or a profit, million-dollar liability policy is required, Listen McDowell County has additional insured. We do not require that for birthday parties and get-togethers and that type of thing.
How many for-profit tournaments do you do per year, or done per year up there?
We probably have eight at Maple Leaf, maybe eight to 10 that we ran out. Now, that can be scheduled, some do not make, and then some are huge, so.
So, sticking with this, that's how we make off a huge for-profit tournament?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, we're going to look at the contracts, because we need to make sure that, well, I just, I'd like to see the percentage of the gate and the concessions, and we can turn around and use that money to grade our facilities and do improvements. And so, anyway, what do you think that weekend tournament makes? Do you have any kind of estimate with concessions?
I have no idea.
Okay.
No idea.
Concessions always done by the person that's, that we need.
They have, they do, once they rent it, they can sell T-shirts, and they can sell concession stands and charge whatever gate they want, and they can do anything to make money.
And then, we get calls on the bathrooms being dirty after those tournaments.
Correct, yes.
All during, when the tournament's going on during the day, and we get bashed because of that. So, that's another thing we need to look at, too, when we do a contract with a person operating a for-profit tournament, we need to make sure we have janitorial stuff. We've got to look at our contracts in order.
So, the priority topics that the Recreation Department's looking at right now is Maple Leaf Bank, most definite. We've had to, that picture's not the best picture to get the full idea of what all needs, but that caution tape is pretty far up from the, back, from that bank. It has eroded, it's all the way coming up on Field Two on the right-hand side, it's all the way now up against that fence. We used to be able to take mowers and gators around the outfield fence on Field One, and that's no longer possible for anything like that. So, that, we are probably looking at $20,000 to $25,000 to be able to fix, have somebody come in and fix that bank, the way that it needs to be fixed. So, it, this doesn't happen anymore.
There's actually dirt on Field One and that right field now, isn't there, where it's high grass?
On both, yes.
Would this be one of your, would this be your top priority in all of the Recreation Department regarding facilities, grounds?
That would be right now, because that is about to, that will be impeding our baseball and softball, and it also can become a liability if anybody could, it's like a swamp, and there's no way to even walk through it to be able to try to weed eat some of that grass down, or get a lawnmower through it, so. The next one would be some kind of location for our maintenance recreation. We have two small sheds at this time. We've become very creative, switching things from season to season, and we even use the swimming pool decks and the swimming pool bathrooms and that type of thing. We would like to find a central satellite location for entire Maintenance Department. And that is pretty much of the Recreation Department. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any. I know that we've got a lot of needs that we saw presented tonight, and I think that we probably need to have a couple workshops, and as a board with our staff, and give direction because there's just a lot of information we've received tonight. And one thing we need to, we, our, you know, our kids are most valuable, I say that, and I know our board feels that way. And it's been a long time since we've really looked at our Recreation Department, just from top to bottom, from programs to buildings to fields, the whole nine yards. So, this is a good first step in presenting information to the board. And our board is really moving forward, going to be assessing and, and working with our staff and with your staff to make the needed changes that, that will enhance what we're trying to do and enhance what we're offering to our, to our community, because it needs to be, it needs to be nice, presentable, clean, functional. And if anybody's watching this, if there's programs that you didn't hear mentioned tonight that you've got an interest in, one thing we want to find out, what does the people want? I mean, would you want more co-ed, you know, you mentioned the softball and the volleyball, co-ed? What do y'all want? I mean, we want to know, as a board, moving forward, we need your input, big time. So, if you're watching or if you're in the room tonight, let our staff, Sue, know if there's a program you would love to see us look at doing, we'll, we'll receive information and assess it and see if we can offer it, because why have Recreation Department if we don't have what you want to do? And we want to try to get to programs where the people can be involved. So, we're excited about moving forward and working with Sue and as a board to see what we can do to improve it, enhance it. We've looked, for so many years, the county has looked, and we need to do that, but at our, our external partners and, and buildings and grounds for them, and our, internally, some of our facilities have not been looked at in a while, so we're, we're ready to look internally at what the county's doing now and, and trying to improve that. So, any other comments, questions for Sue, staff, anything?
I also printed off the entire PowerPoint presentation with current and long-term, and if you have any ideas of anything that needs to be deleted, especially needs to be added, feel free to let me know.
Okay.
Time for this is each his half of one, one bite at a time?
There's a lot. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a start, and that's a start to hopefully more productive things occurring. Okay, this time, we're a little behind schedule. We'll go to our 5:45 appointment, and this is going to be Development Ordinances Public Hearing. We have Mr. Ron Harmon with us tonight, and Ron, come on up, sir. And we have Blair, who also works in that department, with us tonight. Good to have you, Blair. Blair's been working on the trails and doing an excellent job there, too, so, Ron, good to have you, sir.
How are you? We're asking that the Board of Adjustment make, since the Board of Adjustment makeup has changed, we're asking that we make those changes to the requisite ordinances, which are the three Lake James Protection, the Planning Board Ordinance, and the Zoning Ordinance to reflect the new makeup of the Board of Adjustments.
Okay. Mr. Redd, anything you'd add, sir?
Before you have the hearing, what you need to do, you can look at page 22. Instead of copying all the ordinances and wasting paper and electrons or whatever, you have the text for each ordinance, so example, zoning ordinance, 1702.01 is replaced in its entirety, just describing the membership for the public's benefit, is five members of the Board of Commissioners shall serve on the Board of Adjustment. Chairperson of the Planning Board shall serve on the Board of Adjustment as long as he, she serves in that position. The Board of Commissioners shall appoint one other sitting member of the Planning Board to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment. Pretty much, that's the same, just for the, the three Lake James ordinances, as well as the Planning Board Ordinance as well. So, the hearing is required, and we did get clarification from the school of government. You can have one hearing to receive comment on all the ordinances, and then your motion can be to amend all the ordinances.
Okay. One comment, looking at it, that I had, is on the appointment, the five commissioners and then the chairman of the Planning Board, and then it says that the Board of Commissioners would appoint another Planning Board member. I have no problem with the Planning Board picking another member they want to serve on that, just personally. So, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I, I think that...
That's very good. Comments we heard, but you can amend that and make that change when you vote.
Comments, at this time, I will declare the board in a public hearing setting pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 concerning this item. Do we have anybody present on this side that wishes to speak? Okay? Quiet crowd. Anybody on this side? And we do have Mr. Hicks with us, he's on our Planning Board, Arvin, you guys do a great job down there, so thanks for all your work. Okay, nobody there? There are most to go in?
Most to go out, public hearing.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye to opposed, like, say aye. Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Are we voting to approve these ordinances tonight?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion we approve.
Okay.
Exactly, the change is changed.
I'm good with the, what David said, so, you know, we can, do we need to vote on that change?
Yeah, I need to add this amendment.
Okay, and in that motion, I'll add the changes, well.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye to opposed, like, say aye. Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Harmon will be contacting you. You'll need to start meeting. We have several different cases that need to be heard, I think three, from what I understand, back there somewhere. So, probably very soon have sort of overview sort of meeting of that background of the Board of Adjustment, and then get those scheduled for those folks. They've been patient, while we've made some changes.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is our Emergency Services Update. We have Mr. Keller with us tonight, always good to see Mr. Keller, and his crowd is so efficient and do such an excellent job day in and day out, and so, the floor is yours, my friend.
Appreciate you allowing us to come in tonight. We wanted to provide you with a update of what our agency has been up to here in 2019. We've had a really good year as far as in comparison to 2018. I talk all the time about blue sky, strategic planning. When it's not raining outside, that's the days that we need to be working on partnerships, looking at contingency plans, disaster plans. I'm really proud of the staff of what we've accomplished in 2019 so far. I know everyone... I know everyone on the board knows our leadership and command staff, but I want to take just a second and recognize Deputy Director and Fire Marshal for the county, Craig Walker, if you'll stand. EMS Deputy Director Adrian Jones, our 911 manager, Amberly Buff, and Captain Sam Robinson, our Community Paramedic Coordinator, and then Jaclyn Watson, who oversees our peer support in community care. So thank y'all for what you do every day.
Hey, William, on behalf of the board, I want to echo what you just said. That, that's your brains of outfit, and you're set and complete, so hats off. Great job, y'all.
I'm just fortunate.
We got the best in the state right here.
To work around smart people that drive the train every day, and they do a fantastic job. I'm just going to quickly go through each division and give you a 50,000-foot view of what we're up to. 911 Communications, we've been working over the past year, year and a half on Project 60S. In a nutshell, once the phone rings, it's processed and out to dispatch within 60 seconds for critical incidents. Structure fires, cardiac arrests, domestic disturbances, armed robberies, the things that people want, a response quickly, that's what we're after. We're constantly tracking those and trying to improve performance within the 911 center. We've been looking at active shooter, active assailant events, having a generalized message for our communicators to read off to the public should we ever have one of these events in this county. It allows for consistent, a general message. That way, we don't have 100 people told 100 different things. We've worked in conjunction with law enforcement to come up with that general message, and we are preparing to roll that out to our communication staff. Say Something app, this is the school safety app to where people can report suspicious activity or potential threat, and that is ran through the state, incorporates 911 centers. Amberly's done a great job in working with the school administrators on getting the school safety app rolling. Ezzinet Next Gen 911. This is a huge project in the state of North Carolina. All the 911 centers are being updated through essentially voice-over-IP internet, where all the agencies are interconnected through the internet service. There's redundancy built in multiple times. If one center goes down, another county can be their backup immediately, can transfer calls, but this lays the groundwork for next-generation 911. You've heard me talk before to where pictures will be able to be sent to the 911 center, you'll be able to stream video of an incident into the 911 center. Brings up a whole host of other issues to talk about for another day, but we are on that train, and it is moving. If you look at dark blue counties are the ones that are live on the Ezzinet system in North Carolina. They have transitioned to the new technology. The light blue, which we are included in, 46 counties are currently active projects. 60 counties are behind us in green, approved for migration over to Ezzinet, and then the counties in gray have not made a decision whether they're going to move in that direction. Probably the biggest highlight of 2019 that we're going to talk about in, the 911 centers, our recent Department of Insurance 2019 inspection. Each 911 center in North Carolina is graded on a maximum point scale of 10. 2014, that's got to be a 40 model or a 50 model?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, okay.
Tony's age.
In 2014, our DOI score in the 911 center was 7.5. We moved it to 9.13 in 2017, and we just got re-scored, we're at 9.53. It is our, there's one county in North Carolina that has a 10. We will be a 10 if it takes everything that we've got, but the board has, the county manager of the board, our staff, everyone working together plays into this, because you're graded upon your staffing matrix. You've approved additional staffing hours for us the last two years, which has helped. We've added emergency generator power at our Wildcat Tower, which has helped. So all the projects we're involved in the past couple of years has continued to drive the score. The Project 60S that I talked about a minute ago has assisted that. I think it's important to note the North Carolina State average is seven to eight for comm centers, we're at 9.53. And we're not happy with that, and we're going to keep, keep moving. So, great job, Amberly, Craig, and their staff for, for getting us where we're at. Emergency management, continuing working on Lake Toma evacuation plan. Ron and Blair have been tremendous help to our staff. We have trained the other emergency service agencies that we've partnered with to roll out the new evacuation plan. We're in the midst of the To River Hazard Mitigation Plan. Many years ago, the Board of Commissioners approved us being incorporated into a multi-county, multi-hazard mitigation plan. It is time to upgrade that. I'm happy to report the county will not have to expend any funds for the contractor to do that. Hazard mitigation funds from Hurricane Matthew will pay for the county, for our plan to be updated. That was one of the things contingent for us to get FEMA funding for the 2018 disasters is we had to have an approved hazard mitigation plan. Mass casualty plan. We upgraded and updated our mass casualty plan in McDowell County, breaking it down from whether we have five to 10 people injured, or we have 100-plus people injured. We have a structured protocol updated with all of our equipment to where that is going to be a much smoother operation, to where we know exactly what's going to be dispatched upon information concerning the number of victims. Earthquake drill, this year was the first year we participated in the southeast earthquake drill. Earthquakes isn't something that people think about as a risk, but they do occur here in western North Carolina, especially in the far western areas. We are pleased to do that. We have the Second Annual 2019 Hurricane Exercise. A big shout-out to the county staff with Ashley leading the way of getting other departments incorporated. This is growing into a wonderful exercise to bring everyone together, and partnerships truly matter. Winter weather operations, our local emergency planning committee will meet this Thursday. I was happy to report the last meeting, we had max capacity. If we continue on with that, we're going to have to look at another venue at lunchtime to do it, because it is growing. We were maxed out at the last meeting. We'll present the winter weather outlook at this upcoming meeting, but also the National Guard Hot Spot Package. State of North Carolina has identified three areas, one on I-77, another one on I-26, and then I-40, Old Fort Mountain, that during a winter storm that is significant, will receive a National Guard Hot Spot Package, which involves tow trucks, National Guard Army troops, that's coordinated through state and our local EM office. Emergency Operations Plan, I'm just going to quickly say, we appreciate the opportunity to go and assist other locations in disasters during Hurricane Dorian. We were in Hyde County and Bladen County, and we had an ambulance strike team that was in multiple counties. We bring back stuff that we see other folks struggle with, and make sure we beef up our own plan so that we don't have a repeat of what they've went through. It's really, you can't, we can send folks to school all day long, at community colleges, but you can't replace the experience of sending folks into real-life disasters. The best thing about it is, it's fully reimbursed to the county, the county doesn't spend anything. All the costs, personnel, regular to overtime hours are reimbursed. It's the best training that, that we can offer. Last thing on emergency management, IPALS, this is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System through FEMA. This is, our agency now has the ability to set off wireless alerts in cell phones. We can draw polygons if it's a specific area that we need to wake up at 3 o'clock in the morning. Counties in green are the ones that have IPALS credentials in North Carolina. We're certainly glad to add that as another layer of security for reverse 911 and public notification. Really busy in grants, I'm not going to hit all of these, I'll hit the high spot, but we're working on a million-five-plus dollars in grant funding right now throughout the various divisions. The first one under EMS is secured, we're in the process of spending it at this point. The second one is awaiting, under Community Care, the $140,000 that was appropriated in the state budget, we're waiting on that to be finalized at the state level. That will roll into the Community Paramedic Division to assist with operations. We've applied to the Gateway Foundation, the Workforce Wellness Grant that we updated you on about six months ago, that grant is in the process of becoming reality. We recently applied with the Falls Health District for over half a million dollars for opioid post-overdose response team funding. We've received a drawn grant through EM. We're working on the two generator projects for the senior center, County Annex and DeVita, as well as the generator project for EMS Station 4 that you purchased on 221 North. That keeps county funds from having to purchase generators to run these facilities. We secured $25,000 Duke Energy Grant that will update some of the communication radios in the 911 center, keep us from requesting that in the operational budget. We're working on a pet sheltering trailer, that is going to be a go. That is actually $48,000, and we received an LEPC grant. Over on the EMS side, this area right here, this is electronic CPR device. They were here in the 70s, they've redone them in the back again. But we're fortunate enough to get an electronic compression device to perform CPR. This decreases the number of personnel required to work a cardiac arrest. The studies show it's more effective and more consistent in providing, but it's just another, I put this in here to say, this is just another step for McDowell EMS to remain on the cutting edge of emergency medicine. Septic shock protocol, there's a lot of interest in the public now on sepsis. We are in the process of rolling out a protocol where we will be using antibiotics frontline in the field. That will save lives in this county. If we get this, I think before the first of the year, we'll be the first county in North Carolina to have a sepsis protocol for pre-hospital EMS providers. Nine years without a lost time incident, huge ordeal for our staff of preventing back injuries, motor vehicle crashes. We've got an exceptional safety program. Adrian has done a fantastic job with staff buy-in. That saves real dollars for the county of not having damaged equipment and long-term disabilities from our employees. Critical Incident Stress Management, big topic in emergency responders with your number of suicides and issues with mental health. Our agency just recently put a number of folks through critical incident stress management classes to where they can facilitate debriefings after a serious incident. We also have a partnership, and you hear us talk partnerships all the time, but we've got Stephanie Pace. She is a doctorate student in pastoral. Care and counseling. We've partnered with Grace a lot. We actually have employees, she has went through CISM classes and has been riding as peer support on our ambulances, but we actually have employees that have requested her to ride, and it's been really good to see how we can incorporate CISM into our operation. Special Ops Team, if you're on Lake James, we've included partnership with the Sheriff's Office, trying to formalize that more, having a medic on Lake James during busy hours. Dr. Travers, who is here, is leading our Stop the Bleed Program, that's been a huge asset to our PR program. Then 2019, we added Special Ops UTV for all the events that we're covering. Community Paramedic Division, Peer Support Services, high utilization of 911 remains one of the top goals, trying to prevent the call from occurring. You've heard me present before, we're currently hoping that we get year five out of declining 911 volume. We had four years of decline since we started the Community Paramedic Division. That saves tax dollar funds. It's kept us from having to request to add another ambulance, which can be $400,000 to $500,000 a year, reoccurring cost, add another 24-hour ambulance. We took the step to start strategically, insert in community paramedics into the program. I don't know that we're going to squeeze five years of a decline. We knew the floor was going to hit somewhere. We're going to be really close, but we're curious to see where we end up. Mental health diversions, trying to keep mental health patients out of the emergency room and getting them the right care at the right time, at the right place, by the right provider. Huge project in community care. First agency in North Carolina to come up with a pediatric behavioral health diversion protocol. If you have an eight-year-old child that's having a behavioral health emergency, the last thing you want is to spend three, two, three days in the emergency room, where this kid can't get the psychological help that he needs. Now we have the ability for the community paramedic to medically clear them in the field and transport them to a behavioral health center that specializes in pediatric care. Huge. Post overdose response team, frontline on the fight against opioids and meth. This has become a major component of our operation. We see the collateral damage, not with just the patient, but with the family, and how that affects DSS, the Sheriff's Department, the jail, all the agencies we work with every day. Huge fight that continues. I'm proud of what we're doing, partnering with the community. I want to share a short case review as we wrap up, and Adrian's going to do that for us.
Again, we appreciate the opportunity to share with you guys some of the work that we've been doing this year.
And I just want to share kind of a short story to shed some light on how that work impacts actual lives within the community. So, we had a young male suffering from chronic polysubstance use, drug use.
Primarily methamphetamine, which is, again, what we're seeing a lot more than opioids in McDowell. The patient was encountered during an EMS outreach initiative where he communicated that he wanted help. While engaging with the patient, his situation resulted in his arrest and incarceration at the local jail a few weeks later. Because of our partnership with the Sheriff's Office in McDowell County, the EMS peer support was able to follow up with the patient while he was incarcerated. The patient still was requesting assistance with long-term treatment for a substance use disorder, and she was actually able to work within the court system to divert the patient into long-term treatment, rather than tying up jail again and being a more costly alternative. So this brings us to patient number two, who is the partner of patient number one. And while he was in long-term treatment, the peer support again began engaging with this female, she was living alone at the time, with the couple's young son. The patient was also linked with recovery resources, and the female and her son were linked to a local church in her community, where she's able to build relationships and healthy connections to support her recovery. So after the male returned home, he gained employment. The female is seeking employment currently and re-entering the workforce for the first time in over 15 years. The couple's exited Section 8 housing and is able to pay their rent and utilities without assistance. The family is reunited full-time with their young son, and they're actively engaged in their community and church. So I think it's important to understand the impact of the case is far-reaching from an agency standpoint. This could have went as far as EMS multiple times, again, as we know, is a high utilizer, DSS, McDowell County Sheriff's Office. The jail and the court system would have continued to be implicated in the lives of the family if we and the community care paramedics and the peer support wouldn't have intervened. But more importantly, the impact for the family is even further reaching and has the potential to change generations long after we're gone. There's tons of stories like that, and appreciate you letting us share that.
Thank you. Before I do the last slide here, certainly don't want to overlook the building project that we're currently in the midst of, of getting plans, so forth. We've met with the architect, Terry Ashley, has been extremely helpful, and we appreciate the support of getting that to the next level for plans to review, so forth. And that's, it's wide open, and we definitely appreciate that. Last slide, there's three words that we function on daily, is commitment, compassion, service. Whether folks are seeing the blue and orange truck at 3:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the afternoon, our 911 dispatchers behind the scenes, or our EM folks working in disaster, that's what drives us each and every day, is serving the citizens and visitors of this county with commitment, compassion, and service. And I think those are the three things that make our agency successful every day. That's what we live by. We appreciate the support, appreciate the staff. I wouldn't want any other team to work beside, they're fantastic, and just exceptional team members. So thank you for letting us present tonight, and we appreciate all the support you give us.
William, I just say on behalf of the board that if, being a resident of McDowell County and just watching and hearing you and the presentation you did, I think that we are very fortunate to have a leadership team that strives to be the best, not best in the state in providing care, compassionate, caring service, because you're saving lives every day. You can't save everybody, I get that, but y'all, y'all are just, your team and employees, I can go home and rest easy knowing that if anybody in my family needs your services, that you're going to be there, you're going to have the latest and best of what is available to try to make sure that the best outcome that could possibly happen is going to occur. And on behalf of this board, we appreciate from the bottom of our heart what y'all do every day. It's just great, you care, you're in it. You know, I've never been... You know, I've never been a member and served in a volunteer fire department or hadn't been like barely worked on an ambulance or, you know, like our law enforcement personnel out here. And Tony was in the fire department. I've not done any of that, but as somebody who's not done any of that, I get it and we get it and this community gets it, thank you for all you do. It's just great. We got, I'll say it again, we've got the best in the state right here. And I know he's not going to rest till y'all are number 10, right? You've got a team and I know that's going to happen. And it'll probably happen next year. I mean, it's going to happen sooner than later. And so hats off to everybody and relate to your staff that they've got this board's full support.
We appreciate it.
And appreciation.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, let's move to item A under Old Business. This would be universal water and sewer update. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir, and let us out.
Yes, sir. This is an agreement having to do with the grant you approved, I think in August. This is a industrial development fund grant through the Department of Commerce. This will provide water and sewer infrastructure on the new roads that are not yet under construction but being planned. You've got the documents here in front of you, so you have the contract and also a resolution authorizing the chair, the finance director, and the county manager to sign requisitions. So we need both approved.
Okay, comments, questions? Here again, spend $117,000 to get $352,000, it makes sense.
We approve both.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you. Let's go to Mr. Wooton, item B, under Old Business. This would be the Font de Fort Trail Agreement. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Again, a couple of months ago, you heard an update from staff that through some efforts of local advocates, including Judge Hunter and Chuck Abernathy and Councilman Ayers, helped to redirect some funds that were going to be with the city of Marion. They were not able to expend those funds, and so those funds were redirected to the county for the Font de Fort State Trail Development. It took a lot of effort by Ms. Melton to get to this agreement to where we have it for approval, but this agreement you have in front of you outlines several pages of requirements for the funds that will be available for Font de Fort Development. Once you approve, hopefully if you approve tonight, this will go to the DOT board for approval. Once they approve, the project can then, we can be seeking qualifications for engineers and really get the project going. So, recommend approval.
Okay, comments, questions? There being, now what's the pleasure of the board?
Most approve agreement.
Okay, most of them, second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay, let's go to item C. This is the Old Fort Recreation Lease. We saw that particular facility in our slides a while ago, so Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
So, yes, sir. So last month, you had this item on the agenda, just trying to gauge the temperature of the board, more or less. There's direction to see if the town would approve a five-year lease instead of 10-year, which we had before. We communicated that with the town. The town said yes, they would be in favor of that, and they have approved the lease subject to your approval as a tenant. So this is up for your approval.
Okay, comments, questions? For staff. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
If I remember correctly, when we discussed this previous, we were pretty much in consensus that we'd do the five-year. I move that we approve the lease.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay, let's go to item D. This is board appointments, and we have, the Transportation Board has a first reading, so no actions required there tonight. And we have a second reading concerning the Library Board of Trustees. You have one application, so it should be pretty simple. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay, let's go to item E that was added under Old Business. This will be a range update. And, Mr. Wooton, you have something for us?
Yes, sir. So after last month's meeting, there was some discussion on the topic of commercial shooting ranges in the county. I think a consensus to let the planning board look at the topic. What you have here is a suggestion of recommended direction to the planning board. The staff is recommending, and again, this is just a recommendation, you could throw it out and change it altogether, but essentially this direction says the commissioners would like the planning board to examine the issue of private gun ranges. Examination should look at operating hours, sighting, including distance from residences, sound levels, and other relevant issues. The commissioners understand that private ranges currently in operation would be grandfathered for development restrictions, but not for operating hours and other such regulations. I would suggest looking at ordinances currently in place in North Carolina counties to see if they might work as a template for any other regulations the planning board might recommend for McDowell County to the commissioners.
Okay, we do have Ron, he is, besides being the assistant county manager, he is the planning director. So Ron, if you don't come up, and we do have Mr. Hicks with us, he is on the planning board. So Arvin, at this time, we can allow you to come with Ron and up here and, if there's any questions you guys might can help answer. And one thing, the board, I know last month, we had by consensus directed the planning board to start the process, and we've had several conversations since then with the planning board members and staff, and it seems to be a consensus to have a couple planning board members, a couple commissioners, and county manager have a range of meetings to sit down with Mr. Seaman in Old Fort to discuss any changes that could be made that would be more agreeable to the community that has expressed a desire to see something done by this board. And that might be an option. I would rather, personally, I know I've talked to several board members, and like to see maybe a resolution without having to do an ordinance will be great. And that way, we're addressing the situation where it's at. And so what's, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners then, from these two gentlemen, just to get their, get your input and direction.
I certainly, I certainly think it would be probably beneficial for us to go out, you know, as a small group and talk with the fellows running that range and see, you know, maybe there could be some compromises made on some of the problems we're having up there with some of the locals, the neighbors, and without having to go too far with this. But yeah, I'd certainly be for that.
Okay, Commissioner Wooton?
It's been my experience that sometimes when we start writing ordinances and restrictions and things like that, that we may have for ourselves in the future. So I think we would benefit ourselves and the community to first sit down with Mr. Seaman and see what we can work out before we go the ordinance route.
I think the same thing, because I spoke to Mr. Seaman out there and, you know, spoken with some of the neighbors and stuff in the past I worked with at school and just different ones. And it's always a neighborly consensus, if you can ever come to something like that neighborly, to work it out, you know, without having to have ordinances and strict rules and regulations that hides us down for years to come. And I think that's what we need to do, even for somebody from the community involved.
Yeah, and it would be, that'd be a good thing too, to have somebody that's-
Have somebody from that community and that's the favor to direct the officer.
I think communications would be the key to start with here, because if we get an open line of communication, there could be some giving on both sides and work this thing out and not have to have ordinances that then requires manpower to make sure everything's enforced in the whole nine yards.
And Arvin, how many years have you been on the planning board now?
I don't know.
More than five, I'd say.
He was using stone tablets when he joined.
So go ahead, Arvin, give the board some of your insights being a planning board member.
Well, we just, we talked about it at the planning board, did what just y'all were saying, talking about. I had the opportunity to go to the range. I went by two days to listen for noise. There was no noise the two days I was there. It was a Saturday and Sunday after the planning board meeting. So the range was open one of the days, so I went in and looked in it. And I feel very certain that some things could be worked out if Mr. Seaman is willing. It would address the noise. The makings of a real safe shooting range from what I see. And I've been involved in shooting ranges almost as long as I've been involved in the planning board.
Ron, if you want to add-
He summed it up well, the board, the first thing they talked about was can we get Mr. Seaman to come to a board meeting so we can discuss some of the issues? Because what we were hearing from the neighbors was the recoil of the guns is going back toward their houses. So Arvin immediately honed in and said we can do some things like some plannings and some berms and things. So yeah, the board was wanting to look at issues that may be able to do on the ground without having to come up with some ordinances. You know, the other thing too is, we've heard from the residents that some of the hours that they shoot are disturbing because they shoot after dark. So some of those things too, the board would like, we're going to work on too, to see if they couldn't come up with some consensus of hours that are reasonable, because you do have kids there in the neighborhood, you do have folks that work, and after, you know, dark, that makes it hard.
It's always fair if they could come to terms with each other on these things without having to have ordinances. So it would be my position to say that, you know, I'm looking to go forward with the setting up the meeting, the members.
One of the other things that I found out, if I just contacted some people that know about that shooting range, there's several people in that community uses that shooting range.
All right, well, it sounds like the board would love to see a resolution occur between the owner of the range and the neighborhood up there. So, like I said, there'll be a meeting arranged and we'll sit down and just talk.
Can I ask for one point of clarification?
Sure.
So the planning board should hold off on any further ordinance work until we hear back from you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Can you define for us who you would like at that meeting? Soon as possible on the timing, but-
Sure. You know, I think that Tony, with his background in shooting, would definitely be there. And I don't have to be there at it. I can, don't mind if he has to do it, or if another board member's got a strong desire to do that. But I don't, I don't mind to go, but if there's another board member really wants to go-
I'll go with you.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go with you then, okay? But is that all right with the board members?
I'm good with that.
Clarify their clarification. As far as Commissioner McPeters mentioned, other folks?
Sure. I think we could have some people in that area that have, I know the one lady who spoke before, we've heard from her. Are there others that might want to come?
I know everybody in that area, so you know, I could mention it to one or two if that area's like there.
Max of two then, just set a few parameters. If you have two commissioners, you have two planning board members, two neighbors up there that have a desire to speak to their concerns, then the county manager needs to be there, I would say. Is that all right with everybody?
I'm good with that. If at any time one of y'all can't make it, you want me to step in, let me know.
All right. Okay, is that what you need, Ashley? Is that defined good enough for us?
And we'll clarify if we need to, but I think that's pretty good direction.
Okay. All right, and hopefully there can be a good resolution there. That's the goal of everybody. Let's move to item A, under New Business. This is policy updates. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir, and let us out.
Yes, sir. Sometimes staff, in this case, HR director, noticed a little bit of inconsistency with our vacation leave policy, and maybe where some language is not entirely clear. So we've got, I guess on page 69, on page 70, just eliminating some, some language that makes it clear, where employees that are given a two-week notice typically has been the practice, well, the policy, that they have to work the full week, two weeks, at least 70% of that time, and they have to work the last day. So this will clarify a little bit about what that means, because we've had some folks say, well, that's not how, maybe I understand it. So this would be a first reading, just to tweak it to make sure we're all on the same page as far as employee and employer.
Okay. This is the first reading, and commissioners will examine, review, and ask questions, and we'll bring it up at next month's meeting.
And I did, on the cover, I did just, and I try to do that whenever we have a staff request a policy update. Of course, anytime if the board sees a policy they would like to amend or sees a policy that does not exist, that they would like to exist, we are here to put those in writing and bring them back for your suggestions. Just a blanket reminder, I guess.
Okay, let's go to administrative items, item B, under New Business. And Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So these are our routine housekeeping items. The first one, Mr. De Poyster, who is over Public Services, can address this if necessary, but we had a contractor bring in some demolition debris a couple of weeks ago, and there were some wood waste in there that was mixed in. So we require waste to be separated in its proper destination. He did not do so. He said it was an honest mistake. The ordinance requires a verbal warning to them, say, okay, don't do this again. There was some misunderstanding on the staff's part there where they immediately assessed the $200 penalty, which was a mistake on staff, and that's been addressed to make sure we're clear about verbal warnings. So we would ask that you waive that $200 penalty, since it was already entered in the system.
I would prefer the waiver of that.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Can Mr. Wooton?
The next, you have two grant project closeouts for the Kevy Reynolds Community Paramedic Grant, as well as several school project funds. Ask you to approve those two?
I move that we approve those.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Can Mr. Wooton? And you, the next GF-16 and on down, you don't need to read all those. The board has had ample time to review those, and I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Most approve GF-16 through GF-24, SP-1, and also 911 F-1.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay?
And you have item C, as tax matters, Chairman, those are routine.
Okay, these are, you've had an opportunity to review these also. What's the pleasure of the board? Any comments, questions first?
Most approve.
Most approve, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, like sign. Okay. Item D, bridge name discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Wooton.
Vice Chairman Brown had mentioned this item, I believe. There had been some perhaps interest with the new bridge going in at Sugar Hill Road. It's a pretty prominent entrance to the community of Marion anyway, potentially having that named. And so without suggesting names or not, all I've got here is the policy as it relates to DOT naming of state transportation assets, as they say. Essentially, the gist, without having to go through five or six pages, if there is a state transportation bridge, or I guess a very bridge, in our instance, we don't have any ferries, that, there are several different criteria for having that bridge named. There has to be a prominent individual, they can't be a criminal, all those obvious things, but there needs to be community support. So where this instance, you have a bridge that is essentially also in the city of Marion, there would need to be agreement with that, with city council and the board of commissioners if there was interest in naming that for a certain individual. if there is interest in naming that for a certain individual. A suggestion might be if you have a name that you'd like to suggest, and then maybe go to the utility committee.
Yeah. That's the, the committee that would interface between us and full boards, our full board and their full board. Commissioners got a name they want to submit, we'll go ahead and take it at our next meeting. Brenda?
I'd like to. I'd like to do that, and we're not submitting names tonight?
No, we don't need to tonight unless you just have a desire, but...
I do have a desire.
Okay.
And, you know, and I'd like to do this because it basically was my idea to do this, actually, of course, and, and I had someone else in mind to start with, but after thinking about it a lot, it would be my notion that it should be named the Ford Miller Bridge, because Ford Miller has done a lot for this community and for this area and has been a friend to our county and community. So, it would be my thoughts that it should be named the Ford Miller Bridge.
Okay. What we'll do, okay, there's Commissioner Brown, Tony's got the name there, and if there's any other commissioners have a name they want to submit, we'll just put that on next month's agenda and make a decision, then we'll start the discussion with the city council regarding the name. How's that?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Okay. At this time, we have a couple closed sessions. Session. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Green. Let's do sit and comment first, because we may be a little bit, do we have anybody that's present that wishes to speak? Come forward and sign up. Non-staff member, Mr. Terry De Poyster?
You don't catch me.
There being none. Okay. Let's go to, at this time, I will declare the board in a closed session concerning economic development matter. We have Mr. Abernathy with us tonight, and statute is 143-318, point 11. So, I need a vote to go into closed session.
Go into closed session.
Motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And this...
Thanks for being here.
Mr. Chairman also includes the personnel item, too. Is that in the motion?
This is a one close session about both items.
Right, and also general statute 143-318, point 11, A6, concerning a personnel matter. The board is back in session. Of course, no actions taken during that time period. I entertain a motion at this time.
Is there a adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, there are second discussion, all in favor, say aye.